Are we ready, Vicki? Get started.
Yes, Mayor.
I'd like to call to order the special city council meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six o'clock PM. And I think that we have a quorum.
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Next, please.
Next will be invocation given by Stephen Downs, Assistant City Manager, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas Flags.
Please, Rice.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to bow our heads and be together tonight as a community as we discuss the business of this wonderful place that we get to call home. As we talk about important things, please bless us with guidance and bless our council as they make decisions that impact this community, that they'll be guided in the things that they do, be able to express their thoughts clearly. As the public addresses them, please bless it. They'll be able to put their thoughts into words as well. Again, we're so grateful to be able to call this place home. We love this community. We ask that you'll continue to bless it and guide it in a direction that we'll be able to do, do a lot of good within the boundaries of this community and serve people and love people and take care of our neighbors. Pray for these things tonight. Do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next. Play ball. Next, please.
Agenda item three A, Presentation of Employee Service Awards. First will be Daniel Gurica.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's exciting when we get to celebrate the longevity of our employees, and this is a five-year award for Daniel Gurica. To tell you a little bit about him, that we were able to steal him away from a neighboring city after working there for a little over a year. And also his experience that he brought to us from about nine years of forestry firefighting out in Nevada. And so he comes to us with a great deal of experience that helps lead our department and one of our supervisors on a night shift. And so, Daniel, we, we thank you for your years of service to the city and continued service that you do for us. We appreciate you very much.
Next, please.
Okay. Next will be Employee Service Award for Troy Norland.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited that Troy made it. I was afraid he was stuck in traffic. So, so Troy has been with the city for the last five years, been working hand in hand. He takes care of our street maintenance, sign maintenance, and really any other duties that I ask of Troy, he takes care of. Recently, he was promoted to lead over our street department, bringing on some new staff and needed somebody to take charge and make sure everybody is accountable and taking care of business. So, but he's, he's been great, a great asset to the city and just really a pleasure to work for. Anytime I've asked him for anything, he, he jumps to service. And he's always that guy right at my side when we have those winter weather events. So, he puts in the dedication and just want to recognize his, his five years of service with the City of Fayette.
Next, please.
Next is Agenda Item Three B, Road Maintenance Plan Report.
Scott, you could just stay. You're back up.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Just going to do a road update tonight, talk about a few of the current projects and things that we're working on. Wanted to start out by talking about the robotics assessment. So, robotics is a company we've been working with for the last five years, do a assessment. And Troy, who was just with us, actually is the one that, that does the portion of the road assessment for the City of Fayette. So, he does the driving portion of it. Then they take all the analytical information, pictures, and put it into a report comprehensive of the City of Fayette. So, looking at kind of the residential, we have a one point seven two score on classified, two point five territorial, that is a one point six. That's kind of our outlining streets, your, your ETJ, farm to road, roads, service roads, two point eight four, and then secondary, two point one two. Now, this rating was performed before our current year maintenance. So, my expectation, I could look at a lot of these scores, gonna, gonna drop down to one point five, one point two five by the time we do the new assessment. Because we actually had a full year budget and made some, some great improvements this year. So, kind of looking at that robotics assessment, this gives you an overall picture. So, in the dark green, those are roads really classified in excellent condition. It's almost fifty percent of the roads in the City of Fayette. Another thirty-five percent are classified between a one and two scale. So, looking at about eighty-five percent of the roads, normal driving conditions are considered good or excellent condition. Yellow, need some improvements. Those are some of the areas. But one of the things that, that I want to recognize is even in some of these neighborhoods, these assessments pick up vibration. So, some of the newer designs on, on concrete pavement is a lot of cuts in those roads. So, it will pick up vibration, but again, this is a lot of areas that we're addressing with our, with our general maintenance and operating budget. And then a few of them that you see in the orange and red are, are again, some of those FM County roads that, that only service a few houses. But we are watching the condition of those roads and, and making needed improvements to them. So, some of the roads that were part of this year's assessment, South Bend Pain, if you've been out in that area, we made a huge improvement, went all the way from Highway sixty-six to the service road. North Bend Pain, there was a segment of, of North Bend Pain that was still gravel road up until this, this past year. Brown Street Downtown, one of our heavy, heavy traffic streets. Actually, it's only downtown street with no stop signs between Black Oak and downtown Fayette, Maine. So, it's, it's a drive-through, cut-through, gets a lot of heavy traffic. Greenbrier Road, Old Greenbrier Road, Riding Club, Prairie View. Prairie View, again, one of the ETJ roads we took over several years back that didn't have a lot of improvements. It was partially maintained by the city, partially maintained. North Star Road, we did a full overlay on North Star Road. Blackland Road, again, trying to really maintain the condition of Blacklands, and we did some good improvements down there, a couple of areas. And one of them even led to some stormwater improvements on a project that we're currently working on. And then Rochelle Road. Rochelle was one that we worked in partnership with the City of Rockwall on. Going towards the tech park, took a lot of damage during the tech, tech parks construction, so that, that area was just recently done. So, some of the things that we do in, in normal repairs, we still have the fifty-fifty program. We actively promote it. Didn't have a lot of interest in it last year. Some years better, some, some years worse. But we had, you know, roughly about forty projects that were looked at, twenty-eight of them we bid, just wasn't in a price range that the resident felt comfortable with. Twelve of them were completed, but we did also work with Foamworks to do a lot of injection around the city where we have what we call classified as burbass sections of road where it's dipping, causing some ponding in the street. And we don't want that to get underneath the street and cause any, any uplifting of those streets or any washout underneath. So, we did those in multiple areas. Street repairs continue, and we will continue to do them. We do a lot of curb repairs throughout the city. We actually have a, a current list, just waiting on our contractor to let us know a start date. So, we're actively ready to roll with this year's new budgets. And then street sweeping, we do a combination of a contracted service. This year, we're actually going to go to a full service north side, south side, once per month. Previously, we were doing it every other month. And then we, we actually bought a broom box that attaches to our Bobcat skid steer. And so when we're working in a construction area, we'll brush that out and clean up the streets. If we get any heavy debris, say a, a truck drops some, some concrete or something in the street, we can dispatch that out and, and address those areas. Asphalt repairs, so four hundred and fifty thousand square feet is what we were able to do this last year. So, really made some, some great progress. I, I appreciate the support, working with a, a good budget, definitely make some headway. And we feel real comfortable with the things that were done. One of the other road improvements that we're going to be doing this next year is more striping, more buttons. And then we're doing crack sealing. We actually purchased a crack sealing unit, and we are buying the blocks. We've felt like it was time, bring in some new staff. We can accomplish that work internally, make our budget last a little bit longer. So, some other road projects we just wanted to mention tonight, one of these being a bond project, the others are related to improvements, future improvements. So, Ben Payne Road, so Hosway Flores, who's in attendance tonight, is working actively on the North Ben Payne project. So, the northbound connector lanes to Highway sixty-six, they're complete. Southbound lanes, they're actually doing lime stabilization this week. We expect them to be pouring within the next week, week and a half. Driveway extensions for seven eleven, pump station three should be done by the end of the month. One of the things that we had to wait a little bit longer than we liked was on the FEC, Farmers Electric Utilities, overhead utilities relocation. Took a little longer than we expected. It did cause some obstacles that were causing the road on the southbound lane to be delayed. Those are now out of the way. Everything's moving along as it needs to. Some asphalt work at the intersections complete, stripings to follow. Lights, we're working on an agreement with Encore on lights for the center median. Hopefully, if everything goes right, we can get everything completed sometime in November. Again, we don't dictate the signal from Tech dot. We're doing the best to, to push them as hard as we can. But they're having some issues being able to, to get the signals, actual signal lights themselves. Everything, all the infrastructure's in place. We have the Opticom system ready to be installed, and then we have the ILSN signs ready to go. So, everything that we supply to the project is, is good to go, just waiting on them to tell us when. So, again, mentioned the lime stabilization and then doing some, some rebar work. So, Gettysburg, another project that, now, this will be a final piece of the remaining bond projects. This is the piece that extends on a piece of property the city purchased a few years ago, and then a traffic circle. So, that will go from Gettysburg into that phase. So, this is the Edgewater. So, it's, there's actually two projects here, but they're being built together. One is a project by LJ, and the other is the city project with Kimley Horn, but they're being combined. So, estimates were approved, developer has staff ready to go, escrow account was set up through Raju's office. Pre-construction meeting, we are probably a week to ten days out on getting that set, and then we'll give notice to proceed. Does have a January first of two thousand and twenty-six deadline, so it's a little bit longer project, about fourteen, fourteen months, thirteen, fourteen months. But then this will be the connector from really that whole Blackland, Southview, Northview addition to be able to get direct access to five fifty-one. Really, really should improve some traffic concerns in that area. And then the last project is the Miss May. So, Miss May, again, the road going through in preparation for the new Roy City ISC High School. Staff's currently working on acquiring some additional easements to build the road. Design is at sixty percent. We expect ninety percent to be in by October. Kimley Horn is, is working on utility relocations. There's, there's some water utilities, stormwater utilities that will go in as part of this project. And then plans are expected to be a hundred percent by the end of the year. Don't have a start date. But again, they're looking at opening in the fall of two thousand and twenty-seven, I believe, is the last date. Yes. So, again, I think we're going to be way ahead of that because we've been prepping and, and trying to get this project moving forward. Lots of, lots of steps and details, but I think we're ahead of the game on this one. So, that's it for tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Going back to the sidewalks, that foam injection, can you do that on sidewalks as well? Could that?
Yes, sir.
Is it cheaper than the fifty-fifty?
Well, it is part of the fifty-fifty program, so it's an option that we offer. So, when we get a, a call on the fifty-fifty, we go out and assess the request. Determine, does it need to be taken out, replaced because it's cracked or, or buckling to the point where it can't be adjusted? We can actually do mudjacking, that's another option, or the foam injection. And nice thing about the foam injection is if they do come out within that first year and it settles at all, they do come out under warranty and do a readjustment. But we found when we do that under the sidewalks, it's, it's usually more of a permanent fix. If the condition of the sidewalk is, isn't to a condition that it can be adjusted.
So, what about walking trails in the City of Fayette? How does that, how does the city handle that?
Trails are not a part of the program.
Okay.
The only thing that we would maintain would be city-owned infrastructure.
Okay.
Those are on the rageways.
Gotcha. But there's no, there's no fifty-fifty. So, this is, I guess it's a hundred percent. I got you. Okay. And the last question about sidewalks, is there any, anyone that monitors, because there are lots of sidewalks that are pretty bad shape? And I guess a tripping hazard for some people, not only in just in neighborhoods, but just around the city. Is there, do we monitor the sidewalks at all, or?
Yeah, typically it's gone through our compliance officer. If he gets calls and we notify the residents that that they are liable, doesn't always, um, push them to reach out to the program.
Okay.
But they even have the option to to tear it out and replace it theirself, just with a city permit.
Okay.
So that's always an option for them.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, fifty-fifty program, is there, what is, what is considered, what what is, uh, I guess what's, what qualifications are there for that?
So we're we're looking for, uh, any cracking, any lifting, any settlement that would expand past an inch and a half. So if it's exceeding that inch and a half, then we're coming out and it will qualify. Um, so we'll come out and assess. One of the things that I I run into a lot is the fact that the section that runs directly across the driveway is a part of the driveway. So that is the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay.
So we extend on both the left and right side of the driveway to the edge of the property.
And is there an option if Foamworks is coming out for a fifty-fifty job? Is there an option to to ask them to work with the homeowner to?
Yes, absolutely. Um, if they make the request.
Package deal, if you will?
If they make the request, I have them give a separate bid and then they negotiate directly with the resident on the repair.
All right, thank you.
So it it's just, it's a nice service to add or offer to them. I've even had them, uh, adjust the sidewalks at the front entry of of some homes. And it's definitely more affordable as they're out there doing other work, so they they find a good value in it.
And the the Greenbrier extension, is there also part of our Master Trails program sidewalks, et cetera, with that extension?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
On the fifty-fifty on the sidewalk, I actually said something to Michael a few months back, uh, neighbor, and it is settling even more. It's not cracked. The dowels just weren't put in, I guess, correctly. Uh, they were shortened.
Yes.
And literally, it's sinking more and more every day. When I took pictures of this, I think eight or nine months ago, one side was about that, the other side was maybe this. Now they're both, uh, and it's sinking. His estimate for that, to fix that, was a thousand bucks.
That would be in line. Typically, they're they're.
Is that foam or is that?
That that would be a foam injection if he were to receive the quote. Um, and so, yeah, that would be with foam. Um, and it would have probably been multiple areas.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean.
That would be in line to, now his cost would be half of that, so, you know, and we would observe the other half.
He's actually in the concrete business and, uh, and he was literally going, oh my God, because he he knew it. It it, he knew what his estimate was going to be before it came, so.
Yeah, when it comes to the concrete, the one thing that we run into is is, um, is the one-off small jobs. Um, but if you're a company and you know what you pay per per foot.
Yeah.
Um, it seems unreasonable, but when you get them to come out and just bid one small little section, the price definitely jumps up.
Anybody who's done, they, uh, had a handyman come out and knows that, so, to go do that. But, uh, I don't know, I guess, it it just seemed to me like the work was just done incredibly sloppily, uh, to begin with. I mean, whoever the, uh, the the contractors were, that I don't know if Lennar used independent contractors. I don't know, did the city build the sidewalks or those NARs?
Uh, city does not. The the, they're done, sidewalks are put in through development and then the driveway, the approach.
These were terrible.
And the house are built by the builders.
You'll see, you'll see dowels sticking up, uh, just partially, just, you know, as you walk down the sidewalks. I mean, I I I don't even know if it passed any sort of, uh, muster when it went through, but now I'm pretty much asking that, but thank you.
Yes.
Lance?
Uh, Scott, can you go back to the robotics thing on the first page?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what the ranking score is?
Yeah.
What's your, what's your scale?
Yeah, so so one is perfect condition. So your your ones are exceptional condition. Your twos are starting to show some general degradation. The yellow, when you get into yellow, would be a three. Uh, that's meaning you got some cracking, but overall driving conditions are in good condition. The orange is a a four, the red is a five, so those are areas that are showing immediate need.
So how does that relate to the actual score? So I see here that you got, right, you got a one point seven two, which falls into rating two. So what's considered a one, what's considered a two, what's considered?
So it's a combined score, um, but it does take the network and identifies the the number of roads that that meet each area. That makes sense?
No.
So they they take and combine all your road mileage and then divide it out by the percentage and then that comes up with the overall rating.
So how do they, how do you come up with like a a rating of five? See, some of those red roads up there in the north.
So right, if it's, if it's in red, that it's in a condition where.
It's not drivable.
It's in poor condition, but if you look at most of these areas that are in red, um, they're dirt roads. They they're not an actual.
Okay, they're not an actual asphalt road.
They're not improved at this time. And then some of the areas that we do in the assessment, if you look in the lower, lower right-hand corner, um, there's some of these roads that are outside of our city, they're county roads. But we look at the assessment for the overall condition, just for our value.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as Ben Payne, uh, North Ben Payne, are you guys going to plan on opening the east lanes at all?
We are not. Um, the plan at this point is is to keep the road closed until the signal is placed so that all traffic and driving moot motions aren't changed. So, um, plan is wait until both sides are are complete, signals in place before before it's open.
So how are you going to do that intersection at sixty-six? Because you're going from a wide, so North Ben Payne is going to be a wide four lane, right?
Yes.
With the median in the middle and you're going down to basically a two lane on the south side.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be three on the south side when they widen it.
And when is that going to happen?
But yes, they they will have it identified with with the turn arrows, straight arrow. So you'll have a a straight, left turn.
A turn lane?
Yes.
And when do you plan to do, take South Bend Payne to three lanes?
South Bend Payne, um, I think it's.
Is that a county project?
On south is, it's with the county for design.
Yeah, actually, that'll be a four-lane road.
And when is that expected?
That is in the design process, so the county's funded the design for that, um, for that road.
So there is no money to actually build it.
Correct. There's no construction money identified.
That's a yes or no answer. Yes or no. There is no money.
But Lance, wait a second, but in all fairness, for this, how the county and the state works, right? You get engineering, you get funding over a period of time.
But at this point in time, it is not funded. Correct. That's all I care about. Um, and as far as the fifty-fifty program, I gotta say, I use the fifty-fifty program myself. Um, I had had sidewalks on either side of my driveway drop three inches on each side. And then I actually had my driveway drop three inches. And the Foamworks guys came out, um, at the time, it was like a year and a half ago, two years ago almost. They raised it all up and, um, the whole project on my side, to get the whole driveway lifted, was like fifteen hundred bucks. It wasn't too bad. Well, this year, it dropped another three inches again. And the Foamworks guys came back out, leveled it up, under warranty, so it's a good program. And they fixed, they fixed everything again the way that it was. And it, I I would, if you've got, you know, the homeowner is responsible for the sidewalks in front of their homes. And if you have those three-inch gaps, it's a trip hazard and someone trips and busts the face out, you're going to get it. You're going to get sued. And the fifty-fifty program is really good pro, is a good program we implemented. I just gotta say, I like, I like the Foamworks guys. They're great. Thank you.
Right, that's it, Scott. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, please.
Next is Agenda Item Four, Public Comment, and nobody signed up to speak.
All right, next, please.
Item Five, Consent Agenda.
Any questions? No, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second, please, vote. I don't have the start button to vote yet. Do you want to just do a voice vote real quick, Vicki? Is that okay?
Yeah, you can do a voice vote.
All right, why do that? Okay, all papers say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next, please.
Next will be Agenda Item Six A. This is an ordinance to adopt an update to the zoning and development fees. The ordinance being ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-four dash zero five nine.
Welcome, Ryan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, excuse me, uh, I finally got around to proposing some updates to our development fees after three and a half years here at the city. Uh, the fees that we've been working in, uh, during my time here, were the ones that were in place since twenty seventeen. Um, uh, our staff ran a, um, a review of the other areas, cities that were somewhat comparable in size and location to, uh, understand what kind of fees those other cities were charging, just as a little bit of a comparison of what we were going to charge, uh, what what was kind of a acceptable range. So as you can see in the packet, we've made some relatively strategic and minor adjustments to our fees. We didn't do a wholesale, you know, uh, restructuring of our fee schedule. A lot of the fees were adequate for the level of effort that we experienced when we're, um, when we're processing these type of applications. There are just a couple of key, uh, fees that we restructured. I do want to make, uh, one correction. Under the overview and background section of the memorandum, uh, the residential commercial replats were actually decreased, um, in amount rather than increased, as is written there. But, um, otherwise, every, everything else in the, um, packet is accurate. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Lance, any question on your end?
Yeah, I want to know how you guys came up with some of these fees.
I'm sorry?
How you came up with some of these fees? You just go look at other cities and pick the number?
No, no, absolutely not. So, um, what I did was, uh, I didn't do this for every single fee, but the ones that I knew were disproportionate to, uh, to the level of effort. So for example, the replats, we were charging six hundred dollars, uh, for a minor plat application, but two thousand dollars for a replat application, and it's basically the same level of effort. And so what I did, I looked at how much time our staff are using to process these fees and, um, and readjusting some of these, uh, based on the, uh, basically out of the overall cost of that staff time to review and, um, process and approve those fees, uh, those application types.
So so basically, fees, fees are generated based on actual costs of the city?
Roughly, yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, some, some reviews might only take one, one cycle, some might take three. Um, anything above three, we have an additive factor in charging applicants because then we're just kind of dealing with some some problem areas in the application. But yeah, roughly, they are based on level of effort, based on staff costs.
Thank you.
Just to clarify something real quick.
Alan, sorry. I have my microphone, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry?
I didn't have a microphone on, sorry.
Oh, um, when you say like plus twenty dollars an acre, is that anything over an acre is twenty bucks and then additional acres? Or how does, how does that?
No, it's just a base fee and then for every acre of land that's affected by it, it's that certain amount. So it's not, the base fee doesn't charge, doesn't cover like the first acre. It's just the total amount of acreage is what is the additive calculation.
So a half acre would be ten bucks?
Yeah, actually, we do, we do it proportionate, so it's, it's, if it's half, then we we have that number.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Scott, any, yeah, one, one question, probably more question for Michael and Stephen. But, um, i- as I look at at the comparison of fees to other cities, we tend to be outside of probably one outlier on the higher side.
Yeah, other than Rowlett, yeah.
Yeah.
We tend to be a little higher.
Um, so so from an economic development standpoint, does that, we're higher on impact fees, we're, we're higher on the development fees. How how's that impacting us on the economic development front? Do we see much pushback in those areas? Um, I I know a lot of this is stuff that could be negotiated in, but just some general thoughts on that from an economic development front.
It, um, depending on how much homework the developers do, and we found that, um, they don't do a lot of homework when they look at the impact fees. I think they like, they, what we've seen is they make a lot of assumptions that the Metroplex average is whatever. And then when they see ours, they're sometimes surprised. We have, y'all have made a policy decision to lower the commercial impact fees when we adopted the last impact fee schedule. So that's, uh, that's, I think that's helping, but any kind of, any kind of upfront cost does, does impact, uh, economic development. Whether it does, you know, the timing of it is also sometimes the issue. Like sometimes people will decide they're coming, if they're in a big chain, they've, they've already got impact fees. You know, they're used to, we love it when they're, where they're used to working on the West Coast because they look at our impact fees and they're like, oh, that's not a problem. But, uh, if they're from the Midwest or places that they're not used to, or they assume that because we're a small town, we don't have impact fees and they don't do their research and they've already made a lot of decisions to come here. Uh, sometimes, uh, what we'd want to avoid is people kind of getting mid, kind of in the middle of the process. And so we've run into that a few times, where folks get the impact.
If I may add a couple of elements to that, we're always very clear upfront when we meet with developers that we have impact fees and that they're relatively high and that they need to review our impact fee schedule so that they know early on in the process. That's why the DRC meetings are so valuable.
And if they're listening and they take note of that and they go and look at them.
Yeah.
Then they're okay.
Then that's their prerogative, right?
Right, right. But if they're like, whatever, and they're thinking about something else or they're playing with their phone, they're, they may be surprised.
I will say that in my experience, I don't get a lot of comments on our actual development fees. It's mostly the impact fees because they're just so much higher than, you know, five hundred bucks here, a thousand dollars there.
Hey, Mark.
I'm good.
Hey, I just want to quick, um, what percentage of the revenue are these fees?
Of our, of our departmental budget?
Yeah.
Well.
We get a million dollars out of this?
Like, off the top of my head, I'd say maybe like less than fifteen, like maybe fifteen percent. We don't, we don't pay for ourselves with our planning and development fees at all, like close to that. So we rely on on revenue, other general fund revenue beyond our own department, kind of subsidizes the, some of the operation costs of our department.
Like building permits?
That's right.
Then why didn't we raise the fees?
Why didn't we?
Why are we?
Well, I'd say it's a little more of an adjustment. There are some that are raised, but there are some that are lowered as well. I'm just trying to make it more accurate to, over, again, over the last three and a half years, my experience of what the level of effort is for these different product, um, application, um, types. I I didn't think it would be necessary to arbitrarily raise them, you know, beyond, as as was mentioned. We are kind of on the upper level of what the fees are for a lot of these application types already. Um, and I wanted to stay within the realm of the actual staff time associated with processing those fees. But, you know, our department isn't a hundred percent just processing permits. We do a lot of other work that's beyond, uh, what's covered by this fee schedule. Now, one thing I didn't include in the ordinance that might be under, you know, worth considering, considering is an annual kind of escalation, like about five percent of following CPI, but, uh, you know, that that's a decision, it's a policy decision in the council. So some of the fees were raised, some of them were lowered. There, as you can see in the summary, there's about a twelve hundred dollar increase overall for FY twenty-five based on the app, the permits that we projected, uh, on the commercial and residential side that would be affecting this fee schedule. So it is a a great change, but again, I just wanted to kind of right-size our permit, uh, fee schedule to what we're doing and and the amount of time it's taking to process these applications.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, any more question with council? Now I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion that we pass ordinance number zero dash two zero two four dash zero five nine.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, any more discussion? All right, please vote. Motion passes five. Go on with Mayor Billings. No, next, please. I was planning to mark Y Michael.
Next is Agenda Item Six B, Discuss, Consider and Take Any Necessary Action Regarding Amendments to the Current Special Events Ordinance.
Who, is that, oh, Steve, wow. Sorry about that. My apologies to you. I didn't mean to. You wonder what, yes, and then go on.
Yes, that's it. All right, so, uh, of course, this is just a. That's terrible. That's terrible. All right. No, uh, no action tonight. This is more just a discussion. And again, I I provided the current ordinance in your packet in hopes that maybe you've seen items that stuck out to you and that you want to discuss or change. Um, I'll cover kind of the things that that we've looked at. So this is myself, um, our fire marshal, and our, our staff. So, uh, special events, of course, the the tough thing about trying to figure it out is it's something as simple as a block party or as fantastic as a circus, right? So you kind of got to cover all of those items. I mean, we could, we're getting bigger, a circus could come to town, right, or concert. Um, so, so again, trying to cover all of those components from the simplest of acts to the most complex. Um, so, again, just running through the the current ordinance. And again, uh, the majority of it's, it is still good and still in place. It's just trying to be better at what we're doing, right? Um, so, again, this is kind of the items for, uh, what a special event is, closing a public street.
So, again, this is kind of the items for what a special event is, closing a public street, blocking or restricting access, sale of merchandise, food or beverages on public property, so on and on. So that's kind of the things that defines what a special event is. Uh, and that hasn't changed. Where we started changing are in sections, so I added some definitions, uh, for, of course, safety control. We, we added crowd control to what is a reimbursable cost and that list is in that section. Uh, and then some new definitions were added. So, uh, what a review committee is, who reviews that? A farmer's market, open air market, we didn't have that previously defined, so we kinda wanted to make that clear. And, and it's farmer slash open because if it's just farmers, it's just fruit and vegetables, so we wanna cover everything. And then, of course, a force majeure, and again, that's really that definition to protect us from, um, acts of God or, or dangerous things that gives us that power. And I'll, I'll cover that as we go on, what that purpose would be. Next section was the application process. We reduced that from sixty days to thirty days. I think another important component is there in that submission thing. If it's a small event that we can process in a shorter time, we put a caveat in there that the director can change, can approve that in less than that thirty days. Right, so, again, trying to help out the small guy, but again, having enough time to cover the, the bigger events. So again, kind of some cleanup in the application process. Let's find that, yeah, the definitions. Then adding the new sections, oh, frequency, this is a, I knew this one wouldn't be an item to talk about. So as we have it now, let me find that section. So again, this is up for discussion, however you wanna do. What we have do now is a total number of special events that require closure or disruption of a city street and our pedestrian pathway within the same general location of the city shall be limited to four events per year. Now, I, Jennifer and I have been talking about some different language there too and different ideas on how we do that. And I, again, uh, this, the intention of this was not to restrict anybody, but just a, a way of, if it's, let's say it's downtown. Excuse me, some of the business owners are starting to say, hey, this is, you know, affecting my business, somebody else doing something. So we wanna be considerate of that. So that's kinda why that limit or that frequency was listed. But again, I'd like to hear your, uh, comments on that so we can do that. We added the requirement for a street closure plan. And this was kind of just a thought, uh, again, we're getting our new, our own high school, if we start having high school parades. So we wanna make sure that the street closure plan is a component of that. And again, the application, uh, process, we tried to make that much simpler. So we've got it on our webpage now, it's a mygov link, so you click in and it's a step-by-step process. It's, it's just really easy, you can't go till you can do the next one. It's really, should be really easy to understand. So again, simplifying that process, uh, making it more clear and defined, uh, so making it easier for the applicant. And then, let's see, yeah, some more changes there. Again, that's talking about then the site plan submission, again, uh, talking about the timeframe that they need to submit that to us so that we can make sure that fire, street department, uh, police, building, everybody looks, has time to look at it and, and define those. We added the section for tents and temporary structures. Again, that's more about placement and, and fire safety and egress for the, uh, people that are visiting the event. Making sure that the tent placement allows flow, right, and safety. And again, there's that force majeure. And again, I wanted, is everybody familiar? So if there's a fire, if it's deemed, you know, there's a lightning storm and they're trying to continue and we think it's unsafe, that gives us that power to say, hey, no. But again, um, I, I think having that section in there too for that, that if it does occur due to force majeure, uh, you can reschedule. There's no resubmit, no, uh, you know, no more trouble, just reschedule. So that's kind of all we got covered. That might've been a lot, I was rambling.
Mark, you want a question?
Anyway, those were the main keys and, and like I said, if you, anything struck a nerve or, or poke back to you, let me know.
All right, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right. The frequency, I got a que, one question about that.
Sure.
When you say four, I mean, can beer geeks have four and poppy can have four and somebody else can have four?
Yeah, we can do it that way, yeah, per business and, yeah, sure.
Okay. And then, uh, another one about frequency. So if, if someone files a permit or files for a special event that's on, ongoing multiple times a year, do you have to refile the same, for the same permit fee over and over and over?
So we put that in, so the farmer open air market, let me pull that back.
Cause there's really no detail in this, under this stuff.
So it depends on the time, right? So here's what I did for the farmer's open air market. All right, duration for the sales and activities shall be limited to ninety days. An extension, so they could run for a continuous ninety days.
Okay.
An extension of the time may be granted, uh, subject to approval. So he'd come back to the director.
So every ninety days after reapply with a, for another permit fee?
Right, if they wanted to extend. Um, so changes to the site layout activity need to be submitted for review. Food sales and beverage sales, they have to obtain their own special permits.
Okay.
No activity shall block site distances or create hazardous traffic situation. And operational hours are limited from eight to eight. And there again, that, that's that intent is to try to capture those events maybe reoccurring, right? A farmer's market.
Yeah, just anything.
From, you know, April to wherever, right? So, so that, yeah, we try to capture that.
Okay. And then the other thing I have is, so we, we say seventy-five people. If people have a certificate of occupancy for their business, it's more than seventy-five people, do we require them to have an event?
No, if it, if it's a business intended for that, then no.
Well, when you say intended for that?
Intended for that use.
Okay.
Assembly occupancy.
So if, if one of these people had a, uh, something in their driveway, in their own driveway, if they had more, if they weren't gonna have more than seventy-five people, then they wouldn't need it?
No permits required. And they're not going to block any sidewalks or streets, then it's not, they're good.
Yeah, no, I, I just, like I said, I just wanna make sure the process is fair.
Sure.
That's, uh, and that, you talked about the form filled out online. You, in order to get it completed, you have to have all the required information, correct?
Yeah, it's a step-by-step, you can't go to the next step.
Cause we, we were having problems where people were turning forms in, but they weren't finished and then that delayed the process and...
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, couple of questions, the insurance, why three hundred thousand?
So, that's a good one. No, no real solid answer, just, uh, again, trying to cover the, the span of events that it could be.
Has anybody complained about it?
No, sir.
Okay. The second one, the approval process, if it's rejected, who makes the final determination it was rejected? And you'll communicate why?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And there, there's a process there.
Okay.
So.
One of the complaints was they didn't know why, right? So you would say, you didn't do A, B, and C, right? We had the same rules for food hall, we're gonna have everybody else, right?
Yeah, and there's even, there's an appeal process, so.
Okay.
In that, yeah.
All right. The other one is...
One other, one other change we did implement in this process too is all the comments on those applications are selected and they all go through Steve. So Steve sees all comments before they go out. How we were doing it before, the comments were being shouted individually, Steve was, Steve was reading about them after.
Right.
And so now, now every, Steve will be able to see everything. We'll make sure we're com, he'll make sure he's comfortable with somebody's comments before they ever go to the applicant.
Okay.
So that we're all on the same page.
So Steve, you're reading from something up there? What, it, it's not the existing ordinance you're reading from, is it?
For...
You, you keep reading, like you went to farmer's market, I don't see that in my packet.
No, 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 yes, correct. No, that's not, I gave you the old ordinance, these are just new recommendations.
Okay.
I didn't give you those cause I didn't want to confuse you with we're approving something or not, so.
The changes are summarized for you now.
Yeah.
Before, we will, they will be in the packet before you adopt.
Absolutely. So the intent here was to talk about it, make sure we're headed in the right direction, uh, come back to you with an ordinance and go from there.
So you're on the line, you have a checklist for the exactly, they're gonna outline application, exactly know what they need? There's no ambiguity to it, no mystery words? Everything spilled out?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, when we, when you cancel an event or due to bad weather, who makes that decision?
So, uh, again, that would be my final approval.
So if they were started up and started event and lightning and we have a big thunderstorm, I mean, how long will, you're gonna come in and say, how's it work? I mean, you're gonna show up?
Based on that, it, I would get a call from fire marshal or DPS in that instance that, hey, we think this is, you know, something's bad happening. So it'd be at that, so, so it wouldn't be just a soul, it's just whim. So like with Celebrate Fate, we have, of course, insurance, weather insurance and, and different things. If you're doing an event, all of these guys are typically aware of these. When we run five Ks for Wood Creek and different things, they're, they're quite aware of how that stuff.
Okay. And the other question, I think you said for ninety days, if they have the same event, there's ninety days permit, right?
Yes, sir, for, for a farmer's open air market.
Yeah, so May, June, July, will you make it five months?
Can I? Sure.
Because they normally start in May, then in September, that's five months, might just do one.
Yeah.
And as long as they keep the same location, if they change location, then I get it, right? They keep the same location?
Absolutely, yeah.
Same location, the layout shouldn't matter?
Yeah.
Okay, and my last question is, if they use other people's baths, it's gonna sound weird. So some of the farmer's markets and fate uses other property owners bathrooms?
Yeah.
Right, and they don't have their permission to do it?
That's part of it, is that they're supposed to have that permission.
So is that part of the checklist?
Absolutely.
So they have, now have permission?
Part of that submission is that if you're on somebody else's property, you need to have written approval from them, submitted with your application.
So written approval from that business, not the landowner, yeah?
Well, yeah, it would be what, whatever's being used.
So like CrossFit and, and Road Trician, one landlord, but two separate businesses. So who, whose permission do they need?
I would say, well, whoever has control of that property.
That would be the business owner, right? The open, the closed, okay, thank you.
Their lease holds that.
So one change I'd like to make...
Yeah, we can clarify that, that it be the...
I would clarify, but I know there's some angst around them promising restaurants and mobile locations. It just wasn't CrossFit, it was Highlands, it was a lot of mobile occasion, they promised bathrooms and meet the requirements. I don't think they ever, I want to know they didn't have permission, so just wanna clarify that upfront, so.
Yeah. Uh, again, we wanna make sure that, that if our citizens or visitors of Fate are coming, that they have facilities, that it's a safe place to be and that it's well thought out and planned, right? I mean, that, that's our intent because, you know, we're, we're gonna get the, the blame, right, as the city, even though, if it was our event or not. So we wanna make sure that it's done properly and safely and, and everybody has a good experience, so.
Okay. All right, and that one change is five months, although if they farmer's market council first, all right, thank you.
Noted.
Scott, you have any?
Yeah, the only question I have is on the limit of items, um, especially for downtown businesses. For example, food hall, um, some of the breezeways, um, between buildings downtown that have had musicians, things like that, that would, that would need to pull an event, um, permit. The, i- it would seem that we would wanna encourage those folks to do more events and, and not limit it to four, um, would be my only comment. And, um, and I, I know food, food hall has several events, but as long as they follow the appropriate permitting process for, um, for that and, you know, obviously in common ground like the, like the breezeways between the buildings, just allow appropriate access.
You like six?
I, I think, I, I can see a scenario to where it's like downtown Rockwell, to where they've got two bands playing every Friday and Saturday night.
So why don't we just make it twelve or something like that, where they can have multiple fans at a period of time?
So just to allow, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, but even twelve limits that, would, would it, I mean...
Well, that's the, yeah, and also they can come back for a perm, once a year permits fair, right, honestly.
My only thing to that would be is that, let's say we say twelve or whatever it might be.
Twelve could be eaten up in two months.
And it hinders, you know, and then I get the other business owners that are, you know...
What, think of a number for us then, one or four?
Yeah, so, so there still needs to be some type of authority in there that says if you're impacting or affecting other business owners from the operating.
And especially the downtown area, you would want it to be a, a group effort. You, you don't necessarily want one person treating it. For, for example, when they've done the music at Beer Geeks, um, dark racial benefits directly from it and they've got, they've got folks out there. But, um, but just to encourage that more often so that, so we generate more traffic into the downtown area.
Sure, and I would add something like that too is, is, is not really so much, like what we did Beer Geeks, that wasn't necessarily a, a special event.
Right.
Right, so it was, so it was just kind of a, a free-flowing thing, uh, not tied to a permit. So it was, I, I think it was a little more, uh, functional, uh, because you weren't confined to one space, it was just a free-flowing thing.
Understand, but the concern would be that the event's being held on city property as opposed to Beer Geeks property.
Of course.
So, um, so, so whatever coverage needs to be in place for that to encourage events.
Yeah, Scott, one thing, we, we talked about this a little bit offline as well, is we, when it comes to special events, the variety, the types, the length, there's so many op, like so many things there that, and you'll see in quite a few, uh, places, the ability to have, uh, approval, like a waiver or approval by the director. So we could, we could have a, a limit and then say that, that the director could give approval for more. And he'll at that point know whether other businesses are trying to utilize space, whether it's, um, limiting people's access to business. So given how many different options are there are that could be, probably the safest bet is to just have discretion built into it that the director could give approval.
Some approval, yeah.
Yeah. Or so, or something to that effect.
Yeah.
So you don't put them in a box and limit them, but it's a great event, we want more of them, but this ordinance says four times.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alan?
Yeah, just kind of feeding off of that, I mean, if there's somebody, if there's a business that wants to have, you know, third Thursdays every month, an event, I think you should set the permits to no more than a year and then they can fill in the frequency. And then there's a, I guess it would, like you say, every ninety days, they have to have a new permit? Is there a new fee included part of that permit if it's a, just a copy and paste?
If it's an extension of the same permit, I don't think that would necessarily, I mean, cause we're not re, you know, we're not reviewing anything, it's extending that same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just say you'd let the business owners dictate their frequency over a certain amount of time, write it down on paper and whatever fee structures associated with that for whatever the impact is, I think that, that would be fine. I just think that less is more in this, in this situation. Now, back to like a farmer's market style thing, at some point we'll have our fate station open for a farmer's market. How do you see that? Is that, is that a city organized event?
Yeah, we've actually had some, uh, brief talks about that. What we would, we've kinda talked about what would probably be key in that scenario was maybe do an RFP or an RFQ for that. Where you got one user, they're, they're, you know, it's a license agreement with the city on the city property, so.
So you'd have some, somebody organize it for the city?
Yeah, yeah, somebody, yeah, right.
Okay.
Do an RFQ and let, you know, send it out for notice and see what we get back, yeah, cause...
We've found some communities that have done that, so we have some examples of RFQs.
Yeah, yeah.
But, like what does Rockwell do with their farmer's market? Is that a Parks and Rec?
They have a special events.
They have a special event coordinator, they have a, uh, nonprofit does it, same with downtown, so she's running all their downtown events that we don't have here.
Sounds like something we should look into when that, when something gets done.
When we get to fifty-two thousand?
We've had this conversation, there's been a conversation in the last cut, budget or so about a parks director type position. Whether, whether it's a parks director or, uh, you know, more of like a specialist, recreation specialist. We've talked about if that type of position's added into the organization, that that would be something that could absolutely fall into their purview and they could really, you know, make something like that more robust.
You know, I, I see like people who come in and do like one-off events a year as kind of one group and then people who are investing an entire year's worth of events for the city, it's kind of a different, you know, just to make sure that we, we make it equitable for, you know, as far as our fees goes, to make sure that we can cover our costs for a year's worth of events and also for the single event.
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, a, a special events permit's sixty bucks, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, how many? Yep, that answered all my questions. Lance?
Yeah, just one thing, Steve. Uh, section twenty-two dot eighty-seven, page eight, item number one, where it talks about two officers for each five hundred, is that estimated?
Yes, sir.
So can you clarify that as estimated population? Cause we all know how estimates go and what happens if the estimates are woefully bad, like the Fate balloon festival.
Sure. Well, again, you're relying on, I mean, a lot of these...
I gotta say, that was a special event. We're gonna have hundreds of balloons in five.
That whole question was Lance just wanting to say, bring up the Fate balloon festival.
Right, yeah. So, again, I mean, the, the, that's...
Can we, can you just clarify that, is it estimated attendance or something?
Well, what we're hoping is, is the, the, I guess, the applicant or the person hosting those events know what they're doing and providing the accurate information.
Fate balloon festival, didn't notice.
No, that, that wasn't, I remember.
But if you could just clarify that as estimated attendance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Mr. Harper, you have one more, is it?
I do. This is, so for the neighborhoods that have community centers, if they have events, as long as they don't block the street, then they're okay, correct?
They're good.
Okay, all right.
All right. I think you got your concessions. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Samuel.
And you'll bring it back, Steve, with a red line on the ordinance.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't do that yet. Just make us all can read it again. Perfect. Thank you.
And our, now, unless there's a different direction, our intent would be to obviously make that red line and bring it back on the consent agenda.
Correct.
Taking all your things into account.
And by get a chance, people ask questions before the meeting, they need to.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, y'all.
Thanks, all. Next, please.
Next will be agenda item six C, discussion regarding the city council meeting schedule for calendar year 2025. You don't have to adopt it, it's just presented.
Does anybody have a question on that calendar?
One quick question. Is there a way that we could convince Rockwell ISD to have a joint meeting like we do with Roy City ISD? Whether we, I know that their meetings are also on Mondays.
We have asked, and they're, well, we've asked four times, and their answer's the same every time. That is would be no, because they have Mople City to deal with, and they don't have just two.
Okay. I'd still like to ask.
No, I agree. We've asked multiple times. They're getting warmer to the idea. At first it was like, no way. Now they're lukewarm, now they're a little warmer.
They have a hundred and sixty-some-odd acres in the city of Fate right now. That's undeveloped.
We have asked multiple times, and they're lukewarm now, working on it.
They need to get.
We can ask them.
We'll ask again.
Okay. Nope. All right. Well, thanks, Vicki.
Next is item seven, mayor, council, and city manager report.
All right, I'm going to start real quick. Just a quick reminder to the city council, we cannot advocate for the city bond from the DICE. That is against state law and advocacy. For the public, the facts are on the website and will be updated again. So that's, and thank you to Chiefs, as always, DPS, and Steve, and then the team. Scott, great job. You guys do a great job on the roads. And it was a great report. And Michael, thanks for everything you guys do for us on the question asking. And welcome to attorney. You're fine. Don't worry. Sorry, all right, that's on me. And Lance, you want to start?
Again, thanks to city staff for all the responsiveness that you guys do. The city runs because you guys step up to the plate and do what you need to do on a daily basis. So thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark. My apologies.
No, it's okay. I'd like to thank also the DPS and the fire, as always. I'm constantly grateful for knowing that they're around. I'd like to remind everybody to, I know it's still early, but when the time comes, get out and vote. Make your voice heard, make it matter. I don't care who you vote for. But just get out and please exercise that, that right. And I just want to say thank you also to the city staff, who is putting together all the, the answer, all the questions that I'm getting from, from citizens, and just putting just matters of fact and frequently asked questions together. I, I do appreciate you guys jumping on that and helping us get answers to, to direct questions. Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yes, early voting starts, I believe, Monday or Tuesday, Monday, twenty-first. I encourage everybody to get out and vote, vote early, to help with the election day lines. And we've got a lot of important information. City of Fate DPS bond is on the back, on the, one of the last items called Proposition A. And I want everyone to make sure that they get to that point and make their vote known. So I appreciate DPS, city staff, Steve, Parks, everything going on, development. Ryan, thank you for the, the fee work you've done. Raju, of course, and everybody else. Appreciate it.
Scott?
I want to say congratulations to the, the two employees with the five-year service. That was outstanding, both, both departments. Appreciate that. Thanks for all your hard work, city staff, DPS. Everybody, remember to, to spend as much money locally as you can to support our businesses here in town. And then, you know, we shop local, I guess. And since Cody's not here, I'll put in for her, only you can prevent forest fires.
All right, moving on to Michael really quickly, so we can get the heck out of here. Michael, and that's a hint to you.
That is. I will be quick. Just a few items. This coming up, is it next week? That's Justin's last week? Next, so next, next week is Justin Weiss's last week with City. He'll be, he'll be a professor at A&amp;M Commerce, and looking forward to his next chapter. You, we've come so far in the last decade with Justin helping us. And so if you get a chance to say thanks to Justin, and thank you, Justin, for, for all your work.
And we will be getting information out. I think it'll be next Wednesday afternoon. We'll have a, kind of a small gathering to wish him well, likely here. We're working on some details. We'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And we'll post a notice of quorum in case y'all want to, if you can make it. I'm wearing my, I'm wearing my TCAT badge, which is the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power, just as a reminder. That's a system we use to purchase electricity, group of cities. But, ah, but we also have, for the citizens, I was talking about like city in general, the citizens, we have the Texas Power Switch, which is run by Ichoozer in partnership with the city. So as we head into the, you know, some of you all just got your electric bills, they're pretty substantial. So just one reminder, there's a program out there. Go to our website. We team up with other cities. So if you're in FEC, doesn't work, so you're already part of a co-op.
Next.
Next meeting is November eleventh, which is also Veterans Day, but will be open. So next council meeting is a little while in the future, November eleventh, just due to the election timing, and then the, the need for the county staff to move in and set up machines and so forth. And then to, to all the Canadians out there here or up there, happy Thanksgiving.
What's next, Vicki?
Next is automatic adjournment.
Okay, remember there is banana pudding on there. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Second. On paper, say aye. Any opposed or adjourned? Thank you.